Okay, everyone, we're going to start the meeting. If you can all take your seats. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order of the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for February 3rd, 2025. This meeting is being held in both a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak forms to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when your item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have a comment, please raise your hand, and I will call you in turn so we can make sure our discussion is clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Commissioner Peak?
Thank you, Rebecca, I'm here.
Vice Chair Smith?
One last time.
Chair Leonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Dave Curtin, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, one more time, play ball?
Play ball.
All right.
The chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with items 3A1, 3A7, and 3A21 to come after all the A items and item 4B to come before item 4A.
Can you explain that?
Okay, I intend to pull 3A1, 3A7, and 3A21. Item 4B is a very short item.
Doc, can you slow down?
Okay, I intend to pull item 3A1, 3A7, and 3A21 for short questions. And then, item 4B is a very short item. Item 4A is a full hearing, so I wanted to let that applicant who's a businessman go home. And that's my motion. I'm open to any adjustments.
I'll second that for discussion, but I'm not willing to move things around at this meeting for a businessman. Thank you.
I have several other of the consent items that I'd like to just talk, quick questions.
Do you want to put them on agendas as after the other items? You want to go in order?
I'm not particular about the order.
Okay, so do you want to put them on, what do you want to, like, the reason I put item 3A21 on is so we didn't have to go through 21 items, 20 items?
I'd like to make a secondary motion that we approve the agenda as is.
Okay, and do I have a second, Craig?
I don't know that I understand why. I mean, there's some things we want to pull, right? We're going to pull those.
I'll second that. May I ask the chair for a roll call?
Okay.
All right, Rebecca, can you do a roll call, please?
No, no, what was seconded?
Hold on, hold on, every, hold, 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 hold. We've got about 14 motions on the floor, three seconds, and our staff needs to figure out what we're actually voting on, so.
Basically, Dennis has seconded, the agenda is posted.
So I believe that this would be a motion to approve the agenda as recommended by staff continuing items, numbers 4C, 4D, 4E, 5A, and 5B to February 18th, continuing item number 5C to March 3rd, and continuing item number 4G to March 17th. And then we can also address the, which items are being pulled from consent when we talk about approval of the consent calendar subsequently.
I'd like to make an amendment to my motion.
Okay.
And that is that I would like to have the recording secretary be responsible for entering into the record the items on the consent item rather than reading 21 of the descriptions. And of course, the items that are pulled, we will read the descriptions on.
Okay, all the rest of them we will not.
That's my motion.
Okay. Is that okay with everyone? Staff?
I'll second it.
We're going to be doing the substitute motion first, so with the maker and seconder of that, of that motion, be willing to accept the friendly amendment from Commissioner Mazza.
So just to be clear, the friendly amendment is to move the continued items?
No, the friendly amendment would be that for items that are not being pulled, they would not need to have each individual item titled red.
Yeah, that's okay, got it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we're doing the roll call on first.
So you don't need to move it forward. What you just read, you're doing the roll call on.
The second one we're going to go on.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
And Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And so in regards to the secondary motion, we're all good with that one then, right? Or we're not doing that?
Because that motion carried, we now have an approval of the agenda, so we would not then go back to the initial motion.
Okay. All right, it's going to be a little confusing. Maybe someone could just draft up a master list of what we, of what we're postponing so we don't go through it again. All right.
And Chair Leonard, you should have like a little piece of paper.
Right here, I see.
That has those items listed.
Okay, all right. Now we're going to go move on to number one, which is ceremonial presentations. We're going to do the planning commission reorganization. Recording secretary, do you, would you like to make a call to see, I'd like to make a motion, actually?
So, very quickly, if I could give you a report on the posting of the agenda for the meeting.
Oh, sure.
The agenda for the meeting was properly posted on January 24th, 2025. And then you will begin accepting recommendations for the position of chair from any person. Nobody needs to second those, just anybody can make a recommendation for chair.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. I'd like to nominate Skylar Peak to be chair and John Mazza to be vice chair.
Do we do, do we do one at a time or both?
We traditionally do one at a time. You guys can by vote of a quorum choose to do both at the same time.
Skylar?
You know, I've been thinking about this a lot, and Dennis has really spent a lot of time at our city. I don't know if this is going to be his last meeting or not. I'd like Dennis to be the chair and like to nominate myself as vice chair.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Craig Hill as chair. If we're doing two, I'll make myself vice chair, I don't know who to do. And I also would like us to consider, and I don't know if we can make a motion, but we have a new, a new commissioner coming in next meeting, to consider making that our vote on chair at the next meeting rather than this meeting.
John, may I ask how you know that we're having a new commissioner coming into the next meeting?
Because it's been announced by the person who's appointing the commissioner, who it is and what it is.
So you know for a fact that the person has said who that commissioner is?
I know that the newspaper has reported.
So if the newspaper knows, everything that's printed is true?
And, well, I've heard it directly from the commissioner.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and second Skylar's motion. I think it'd be a nice, I'm still unclear in regards to what's happening with Craig staying on or what's happening. I'd like to go ahead and second Skylar's motion.
So again, nobody needs to second any of these. We will, after everybody has nominated who they would like to nominate for chair, we will simply, I'll call each of your names and you'll tell me who you're voting for to be chair.
Okay.
And then traditionally, we, subsequent to that, have the chair take the oath to office, and then the incoming chair presides over election of the vice chair. If, what we do need a motion for is if you do wish to change that practice and do both at the same time, we would need a motion and a second and a vote for that.
Are you guys?
I would suggest we don't since we will have situations come up where somebody was going to be chair and ended up being vice chair, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm just trying to stick to the order of where we're at. I don't see us putting a brand-new appointee as a chair or a vice chair, so.
Yeah. May I have a comment?
Sure, go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, so I had been expecting to step away from the commission to pursue some few other opportunities, but given my long history in town, my background in law and policy, I figured that now is not the moment to step down but to step up, as I did after Woolsey, and stay up here at least until the dust has settled figuratively and literally. So I would be happy to do one last term as chair, and beyond that, we'll see what happens, but I'm not imminently departing now. I'll be here as I'm needed.
I'm confused with that statement. That's like I got one foot in and one foot out. I don't think the city needs somebody with one foot in and one foot out.
It's not at all that. Both my feet are in, I'm here now, I'm ready to be the chair again, I'd be happy to do it. I think I'd do, when I've done it before, we've had less ranker and maybe more efficiency than some other chairs, so I think I'd be a good person in the spot right now.
As I said, I think Skylar's motion, considering Dennis' almost 15 years of service and he was scheduled to be chair next, I'd like to go ahead and place my vote for Dennis.
Even if it's for one meeting, just this meeting?
Yeah. And then?
And then we redo this?
No, we'll do the vice chair, yeah. Go ahead, Skylar.
If I had permission to ask Rebecca, I think she wanted us to go down the role here and give our two cents on who that was going to be, is that correct?
What I will do is call each of you in order, and you'll announce the name of the person that you are voting for for chair, and if we have a quorum for one person at that point, then that person will become chair. And Chair Leonard, would you like me to call that role?
Please.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, Dennis, do you want to do it for hypothetically one more term, or are you, one more meeting, or what's your feeling?
Well, I gotta, I gotta be honest, I am a little torn. It's an honor, it's just an honor to be up here. I'm not long-term, obviously. Ms. Riddick is our next commissioner, as I understand it, is two. I appreciate Scotty putting me in and Drew wanting to do the same. It's kind of a tough spot. I think, I think you guys have to think past me. I think you have to, you're going to have to go either, if Scotty wants to do it or if he's not doing that right now and, you know, we reelect Drew, or we go for Craig, or however you want to do that. I don't think, I don't think it's probably the right thing to do. As much as I would like to do it, I'm talking too much, as much as I'd probably like to do it, I don't think it's probably the right thing to do tonight, and I will, I will bow out at that point. However, I appreciate the thought. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes?
Dennis, if I may, I just want to be clear that, would you be willing to do that if I nominated you to chair? Because I don't know if it's going to change for the planning commission right away or not. I don't know, I don't know if your seat's going to change right away or not, you know? I'm not privy to that information.
From what I understand, they're taking that vote on February 10th. They're going to, the city council is bringing their new people in or redoing people, so as I understand it, that will be the case next Monday. So that is going to happen.
Would you be willing to serve as chair for this meeting if this was your last meeting? Because I think you've given more to this.
Because you're talking to me, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we're good. Do you want to go ahead and do the roll call, please?
So you're telling me the name of the person you would like to see appointed for chair, Commissioner Hill.
So are you going to call?
Commissioner Hill, you, I'm asking you to name the person you would like as chair tonight.
Oh, I'm being addressed, I didn't hear my name.
Yes.
I'd be happy to let Dennis do it for a day, or for a meeting, or even two meetings if you're, you know, doesn't have, I would like to be the chair going forward beyond that.
So you voted for?
For tonight, we're voting for who would be appointed to chair this evening only.
Correct.
So your vote is for Dennis?
I would vote for Dennis with that understanding.
Or I should say Commissioner, Vice Chair Smith, sorry. Commissioner Mazza?
Well, I'm a little confused, I thought Dennis has turned it down.
Well, he just picked it up again.
Oh, he picked it up again? I vote for Craig.
Commissioner Peak?
Dennis.
Vice Chair Smith?
I'm honored, thank you. Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Dennis.
And motion carries, Dennis Robert Smith, you are now our chair, and if you'd meet me at the podium, please.
You guys get sworn in. All right, are we going to do the swearing in and then do the vice chair?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So then Chair Leonard, if you could move to.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine. All right, thank you.
Sure thing.
Rebecca, let me know when you're ready. All right, you're going to repeat after me. I?
Dennis Robert Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve as chair of the Planning Commission of the City of Malibu.
That I will diligently serve as chair of the Planning Commission of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Chair Smith.
Thank you.
Do you have some words for everybody?
Okay, I make a motion to nominate Craig for vice chair.
Well, I think, as soon as Chair Smith takes his seat, he will pick up with item 1A where it says in bold, incoming chair.
Okay. Completely, oh. Completely unexpected. Didn't bring my glasses, so we'll get through this. And no, those won't work, but thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. What do you want me?
There's a script. You have a script at the dais at your seat, and it's under 1A where it says in bold, incoming chair accepts all nominations for vice chair. So you can just call commissioners and ask them who their nominee is.
Okay. Commissioners, I'll start down at the end and we'll work, we'll work this way. Commissioner Peak?
I will awkwardly nominate myself as vice chair.
I will nominate Craig Hill as vice chair.
I will awkwardly confirm my nomination as vice chair.
Because this is, we don't, Craig has decided to stay on, I'm willing to go ahead with Craig for vice chair.
As will I.
Next time.
So I'll do a formal roll call. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard? And you should be stating the name of the person that you wish to have as vice chair, which, you just say your name.
Craig Hill?
Yeah.
What he said.
Commissioner Mazza?
I'm voting for Craig Hill.
Chair Smith?
Craig Hill.
And Commissioner Peak?
Craig, ready?
And motion carries, and Craig, if you'd like to meet me at the dais.
Rebecca, you want to do it?
Let me do it.
Skylar, you want to do it? All right. He's, Skylar's the official swearer inner.
Yeah. I think we're doing some good bipartisan shit here.
What did I do with that?
Do you still have the copies at the dais?
Yeah. Have to move again.
You're tough, Gail.
All right, while we're playing musical chairs up at the dais, we'll get started with this, if that's all right? So, I?
I, Craig Hill.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will serve, that I will diligently serve as vice chair of the Planning Commission of the City of Malibu.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I diligently serve as vice chair of the Planning Commission of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Hill.
Thank you, sir.
Got to go to work here.
Yeah, I think they moved you. I moved everything for you, and water. There you go.
Okay, we've worked through that, so we'll come into the written and oral communications from the public. Do we have anyone tonight that would like to speak? We'll go with our speakers first.
We don't have any in-person speakers, but we do have virtual speakers for item 2A.
Okay. All right, we'll take our people from outside the building first, go ahead.
Two raised hands, first Howard Rotsky.
Hold on, did it unmute me?
Yep.
Cool. Well, congratulations to Dennis, well deserved. Congratulations to Craig. I just wanted to say, as you guys probably already know, the eyes of the world literally are on us. And we need help from the federal government, the state government, our elected officials, the water board, et cetera. And they're all looking for excuses not to. So I'd like to ask all of you to treat staff respectfully and remember that all the people that got hurt, we know, every one of us knows at least one or two of them that got hurt, and some didn't make it. So in respect to them, let's try to get them back in their homes as fast as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Joe Drummond. Hello, everyone. I'm just a little confused because I always thought when a city council member had no longer been reelected, the planning commissioner was just not, not appointed anymore. I just thought Dennis wouldn't be there today, that's all. That's what I thought would have happened in the past, so I'm going to ask the city attorney to address that if he could. And also, I think you all know that my house, along with 170 other of my neighbors in Big Rock burned down in this last fire, so I am not going to start planning commissioner for at least a month, I'm not sure how long, but I hope that you can all vote. We are going to be coming in droves to the meeting on February 20th to ask for some serious fast-tracking because we need our families in our homes, our schools need our kids in their, in their schools, in their homes, to rebuild. I would really like the Drew Leonard, Karen Farrar fast-track with just 10%, that's it, to fast-track our rebuilds so that we can be in our homes within a year, I hope, that's what I'm hoping. We are meeting with Yolanda Bundy and Tyler Eaton every week, and we're, we're hoping to meet with Mary Ann and Bruce, the ad hoc committee, and we hope that you guys can be on board with everything that we, we, we put forward to try and make this process as easy as possible for us victims, which are over 700 homes. I think Woolsey had 488 homes burned down, so this, no one seems to know how many homes actually burned down in eastern Malibu, and it is a ton, it is a lot, it is devastation, it's an apocalypse, and I want to really say I appreciate what Skylar said today at the city council meeting. I really am glad you want us back in our homes as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, planning commission staff comments. Gentlemen, Commissioner Peak? I just first wanted to start by thanking all the first responders in our community, and I think that this is a time for people to be neighbors, unfortunately. As you see, I'm wearing the Anawalt hardware sweater or jacket. It's pretty sad to see what happened to the Palisades, to our neighbors, and we're going to get this place rebuilt as soon as we can, but it's important that it gets done as safely as we can. And Joe, I appreciate the comment. Unfortunately, at the planning commission level, I guess you could call it like a lame duck policy where Dennis might be our lame duck right now, I'm sorry, Dennis.
It's okay, it's okay.
I think that ultimately, he has given us 15 years of his service in the city, and it was his turn to be the chair. I know that there's might be some, somebody new coming in, I think that that's awesome, but I really appreciate Dennis's leadership on this community and the time that he's given to our community over those years.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's not a ton of us here right now, so I appreciate the applause, so anyways, Dennis. Also, the policy that was mentioned by Joe as well was actually crafted by Riva and working with the planners at the time of this city and sensing the needs of the community as per disaster. So I know that right now on our agenda tonight is not specifically disaster-related items that had came earlier today at the city council level. And I really want to encourage people in our community to reach out to the resources that are available to them. It's really frustrating to navigate those, I think that that's one of the most difficult things that anybody goes through in this. You know, I wrote a email the other day to the members of the fire brigade that I'm on, two of the leaders. One of them, Keegan, lost his house in the Woolsey fire, and the other one was Tyler, and Tyler lost his house in the Palisades on this fire. And I said to them that I never, I'm glad that I don't, that never happened to me yet. You know, I lost some stuff in the Woolsey fire, but not everything. And I think it's very important for us as a community that as this place gets rebuilt, that we work with our staff and our staff works with the professionals, and we trust the science we learned from this fire to build our community back safer than it was ever built before. And I also would implore builders and contractors in our community, thank you for putting a timer on me, Rebecca, to let FEMA, let the EPA, let the most trusted people in the world that have more experience with us than anybody at our city level sometimes, do their job. And if you're a professional that's in our community, you know, there's a lot of chatter from doctors and others that are out here in Malibu, right in the midst of the disaster. And there's a system that's in place, in the incident command system, for how those things are dealt with when there's a disaster. And I would really appreciate those individuals here, including myself for the matter, I haven't had the time to deal with it my own as an electrical contractor, to get familiar with that system and tie into that system, because when we have some rock slides, or when we have some mudslides, or when we have the next fire, we as a community can have. the next fire, we as a community can have our boots on the ground to tie into that system and get people the resources and the things that they need in a timely manner. I, you know, the speaker, awkwardly, we have one speaker at the hearing tonight, and normally I don't talk very long at all. But to Joe and Colin, Colin is also a member of the Fire Brigade, her husband, and he did an incredible job helping coordinate those individuals in our community, in the community of Big Rock, but also the community of the Palisades, the community of Topanga, the community of Los Flores, and everywhere else in that, I want to call it the southeastern, southeastern portion of the Santa Monica Mountains. The evacuations that were done were incredible. And I just want to say that if you see somebody out there, and a lot of people are going through all of this trauma, PTSD, you know, I've been forward with that in the past, that stuff's real, and use the resources to your advantage. Because I haven't always done that in the past, and that didn't work out well for me. So I think it's important for people to be neighbors. We live in an awesome community. We're so fortunate to live here. It's one of the best climates in the world. And Dennis, thank you.
Thank you, buddy. Okay, Commissioner Maza.
Yes. First, I want to let the public know that on February 20th, there will be a meeting to discuss the fire with the planning commission. And we will be open to any and all suggestions. I appreciate what Skylar said, and one of the things he said was that we have to build back safer. And so there's a lot of talk about quick, 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 quick. And there's a word called planning. And we need to consider that. For example, Caltrans was proposed getting rid of the middle lane of the highway. Well, we just had a fire. We needed the middle lane of the highway. So we have to think about things like that, sea rise, armoring, landslides, debris flows, a lot of things like how dense you want to be up in the mountains. So please don't just consider, I want it back now, it's mine, and I want it back as fast as I can get it. You want to be able to live there for 20, 30 years, unless you're as old as I am. And so don't attack your planning commissioners or city council or anybody else who comes up and says, gee, maybe we ought to require screens, or maybe we ought to cut down on the amount of foliage allowed, et cetera. Those types of things must be discussed if you want to get through the next fire. And there will be a next fire, it just depends on how big it is. So I want to also caution people, I've had several people come to me who have been approached by outside contractors, especially on this cleanup thing. And what they were told wasn't true. And the prices they were given weren't realistic. And so be very, very careful what you sign and what you do before you talk to somebody who knows how the process works. And the process is reasonably standard, we've done it before, it will change a little, but there are pitfalls to not studying what you're doing, and those pitfalls, it can be very, very expensive. So I'm not going to be involved in that at all as a planning commissioner, but I feel for the 700 and so people that got burned out, that they want to be careful, do it right. Speed doesn't necessarily make it right. And you're not going to be first in line even though they tell you you are. And reach out to people who went through Woolsey. They can give you a lot of advice and help you a lot, and reach out to contractors like Dennis that have worked in Malibu and know how things go in Malibu. Malibu is a different place than where most people live. And this idea that the Coastal Commission has nothing to do with it, and these people have nothing to do with it, and President Trump is going to fix everything, have a lesson to learn. And so be very careful. And then please come into the February 20th meeting and give us your ideas. And I also want to congratulate the trolls for not showing up tonight.
First off, I want to send my sincere condolences to everyone that lost their homes in the fire. Craig, Joe, I'm really sorry for you guys. If there's any questions that you guys have, I have been through the process, and I'm more than happy to shoot any information I have towards you. And that goes to anyone else in this community. This is why I volunteered to be on the planning commission, is to try to help people. I do find it interesting how basically the whole basis in regards to how we decide projects is based specifically in regards to ESHA and setback from ESHA. And that fuel, as it seems like it's coming to light, does, we need to figure out a way to protect our homes and build back fortified homes. And I think that the whole concept has gotten a little bit skewed off-base through the years that has probably helped contribute to the disasters that we faced. You know, the idea of losing 25% of the city every six years is just not a viable option as far as I'm concerned. And as I said, I'm just terribly sorry, and I'm here for anyone that has any questions or needs any help. Thank you.
Good of you. Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, thank you. I echo a lot of the comments I've heard, if not all of them. A lot of them are things I was going to say anyway. With your indulgence, I haven't talked a lot in recent meetings. I'd like to present some pretty tight information that might be sort of long, but I think helpful to a lot of people. First of all, thank you to everybody for your expressions of support. I've been to the disaster center a couple of times now, so might be able to answer questions for anybody. By the way, staff, I'm glad to hear that the housing element was finally certified in December. You worked hard to thread that needle, unfortunately you can focus on other things now. So these comments are really for the public, for us, and for staff, and so I think it's important to say these in time prior to our meeting on the 20th. Well, as for the immediate pass, there are still questions of liability to be answered, and speak to me offline if you have thoughts to share on that, because there's some stuff going around. So as we consider our priorities, you guys talked about it, let's keep in mind the tradie's credo. You can build it fast, cheap, or good, but you only ever get to choose two of those things. So for neighbors who've been around a while, I think most would prefer good and cheap, which suggests it might take a little longer. Lester Tobias circulated a letter explaining how there will be bottlenecks in the number of available architects before projects even get to the city for review. So to make the planning process work for as many folks as fast as possible, we should be encouraging applicants not to piecemeal. If what they really want is 150%, we don't want them applying for like-for-like expecting to supersize it later. One thing that Woolsey showed us was that we had planners having to deal with the same project multiple times as applicants' ideas evolved. It wasted planner time, slowed the process. So let's think about, can we create some incentive for applicants to be as clear as they can be about their trajectory from the start? You want 150%, apply for the CDP now. And, you know, just thinking out loud, and maybe we can add some kind of clause that says if you opt for like-for-like plus 10, you can increase your TDSF for five years, or some kind of guardrails. Or maybe we say, submit your application, the only changes will be where the planner acknowledges that something would work better that way, an increased setback or something, that, you know, an honest afterthought, but so that changes aren't just arbitrary. That would put some onus on rebuilders to consider their needs carefully before they submit and not be revising on the fly. Now regarding any new zoning ordinances or planning policy accommodations, let's have the council and the staff make the decisions on those soon, right away, after the 20th, and stick to them. After Woolsey, too many applicants were told different stories from different planners at different stages. So representations made by a planner should be recorded in a way that if there's a different planner later, applicants don't get told a new story about what is or isn't possible. Okay, on the land side of PCH, it's imaginable that the sorts of proposed rebuilding rules that we'll be seeing on the 20th can be sorted out and specified in ways that people will be able to figure out how to work with the rules and how to get on with it. And we should be able to make marginal accommodations to existing codes and procedures, and probably de minimis will become a common phrase. The beach side is kind of a different kettle of fish, I think. Many of those lots won't be able to comply, many will be legally smaller than they were 80 to 100 years ago, in part because some managed to build in the PCH right away back then, but mainly because the mean-high tide line has come further ashore due to diminished sand deposition. So, and everything south of that line is state land, so what's left of some legal lots may no longer be deep enough to support a house legally. And in those cases, what do we do? How do we grandfather an encroachment onto public land? That's going to be a question.
Or do we do something different?
Well, and I'm getting on here. Options. But first, you know, timber piles will have to be replaced with concrete, which collectively will function more like seawalls, and, you know, the LCP disallows seawalls except for OWTS for good reasons, because they, for example, they promote side scour, which inhibits sand deposition. Having all those extra reflective surfaces of allowable concrete will further diminish beach sand, allowing the mean-high tide line to rise further, and in the next few decades, even more lots may be squeezed.
Okay, let's go.
So looking to the future, and I'm not pitching a specific vision, but just articulating some things we should think about. On the beach, let's take inventory of these problematical aspects, determine how many lots are actually affected, by what issues. You know, is it 5% on one issue, 50%? On the FEMA flood maps, how many lots show a red flag, as it were? I've recently been shown evidence from Scripps Institute of certain black swan tsunami events. We need to think about that. Only when we have a picture of the discontinuities and the types of grandfathering that might be necessary can we begin to think in terms of what the base policy should be that applied to all this. So we'll make inventory. We should also be looking for opportunities. This is kind of a now or never moment for some things. So Skylar, some of these situations are going to involve eminent domain, and can we do that in a creative way? In some cases, maybe instead of directly transferring to the public, maybe there's some kind of public-private sharing of cost and design to improve PCH and private parcels in conjunction. Another alternative might be for, to allow actual residents as opposed to absentee investors.
Okay.
I'm almost there. Look, you know.
I see how much you got. You've got one more thing. One more. Dude, you can run for city council in the future if you want. Pick one.
Do you guys want to think about the future of our city or not?
Not this minute, but soon.
The place for that, I would argue, is the city council meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
Argue, argue.
My point was that, let's get these things, okay, I'll send a memo to staff.
There you go.
We'll get these on the table for staff to be thinking about, but I wanted you guys to, you know, have a say in it too, and think about these things too.
It has to be agendized to us.
That's called grandstanding.
Yeah.
Wow, I've never been accused of that, but there's always a first time. All right, all right, fine, I'll leave it there. I had some other ideas here, but I'll leave it there.
I'm sure. Go ahead, Commissioner Maza, real quick.
I cautioned about using outside contractors, and I do, one thing that is important is Malibu is a neighborhood, it's a town. We have schools, we have a brand-new high school coming, and it's very important that the residents of Malibu stick around. And I was in the investment business for almost 60 years, and I know from being in that business that there will be, the sharks are feeding right now, coming to town, trying to buy your lot for less than it's worth. So I hope that people that are afraid of the rebuilding process, or tired of fires, or whatever, will just pause, wait a while, consider, let things settle down, and if you want to sell, you will get a better price later. You sell your lot and decide to give up, in the next couple of months, you're going to get scalped.
Okay, all right, we're good. Thank you. Okay, my turn. Just a couple of things, fire victims. I am so sorry for all those that have lost, Commissioner Hill. It's just awful. This thing is bad, and it's just, it's just not going to be easy. But everybody's got to hang together and do this together. I'm guessing I'll ask staff, we're open now, correct? The city is open, and the doors can open, and we're open all day.
Currently, we're open by appointment at the pump counter.
Okay. Here's how I feel about that. I've always felt this way. We're a city. We need to be open. We're a business. Eight to 5:30, eight to 4:30 on Friday. We need to put our, we need to open the doors. We can't, we can't do this. The portal's just open, people have been trying to do things since December. I know we're behind, and I know where we are with all this. Which brings me to my next point, which is very important as well. People that are in the queue now, that are waiting for their processes and how long that takes already, can't be put behind the fire victims. As important as all that's going to be, we watched that at Woolsey. It all started out, okay, we're going to get them all done, we're going to get the fire people, you know, well, we can't do that. There's a lot of people out here that are watching me, that are in this room and hearing us over the radio. We can't let the people in the queue that's already sitting there waiting for things to get done go behind everybody else. And as I understand, this time we will have, as Yolanda did and has done on three previous fires, hopefully, either she's running it, or we have a complete separate staff that is handling all those things and not taking it away from all of us that are already doing something. We can't lose that ground. It's not fair. Okay, said that. Me. This is about me now. Okay. I want to thank Paul Grisante. He called me four years ago, and I, after the election, and I thought, oh, he's going to put me on Public Works. I love Public Works. I've done that kind of work, I'll do well down there with those guys. Nope, said I need you on the planning commission. And I thought, oh my God, okay. And one of his comments was, one of the reasons I'm picking you is I know you'll be there. Because I sat next to Mr. Haney for 10 and a half years. And in my 15 years plus now, 15 and a half, I've still only missed 12 meetings. A 13th, but that was a, that was a screw-up on the, I guess, electronics or whatever, and I wasn't able to enter when I was babysitting for my daughter down in San Diego, Point Loma. So thank you, Paul. It's been wonderful. Commissioners, all of you, thank you. I know that we may not be on the same road all the time, but we are here, and we are putting in our time, and we are giving to our community. Public service is one of the greatest things anybody could ever do. If you've got a hankering for it, or you decide you want to do it, get involved. That's what I did. I came from Marietta during the recession. I was on a couple of commissions in Marietta. I love this stuff, it's nuts. And you've got to be kind of a weenie to like this stuff, so I'm in. Skylar, thank you. I've said it from the very beginning, that eight years of experience of you being on city council has helped us tremendously. Tremendously. You're such an asset to be up here. You bring that experience with you, there's nothing like it. Absolutely nothing like it. And you always had a couple of things in your back pocket. Love that. So thank you. Rebecca, what can I say? Thank goodness for you. We would be nowhere without you. You are everything to us. You are everything to a lot of people that's in this building, upstairs, downstairs, it's right. We would be nowhere without you, and we can't, things wouldn't get done. It just, you're a wonderful human being. I'm glad that I got a chance to know you. It's been great, and I might be able to sneak back there once in a while and say hi, I doubt it, but we'll see. But thank you. You've brought everything to us, and you're the absolute best. Gail, thank you for all your hard work. You get these things out. Rebecca hands you stuff. You get things out to all of us. It's very important what you do, and all the other tasks that you do, along with everybody that's, that does work in this building. Staff, I love you guys. I love you guys. Everybody sitting on that side of the building right now, you know how I feel about you. I've felt that way, I've gotten up and spoken about it. I've felt that way, I've gotten up and spoken about it. You're very important, always important, and staff deserves that as well. I thank the world of all of you, and thank you. Thank you for all you've been doing. It's an honor to sit here. I mean, I came from Marietta in the recession, started watching meetings, I worked for Gordon Gibson at Morning View &amp; Philip, on the Schrock's house in 2008. And I started watching, because they had it on TV. So I started watching city council meetings. And then when I got here in 2009 and worked for Kevin Babano, I started coming to meetings. And I came in October of 2009. In my first meeting, I sat in the back. I listened to Norm, because Sharon Borowski called him up to the podium to ask him a question. And where I came from, those arrogant sons of guns would never do something like that. But here, we do. We do it all the time. Commissioner Maza does that, calls people up. Everybody's done that. I sat next to Mr. Haney for ten and a half years before the pandemic. So I'm about to turn around and take my rightful position next to him again, coming up. I believe I've done a good job. I think I've done a really good job, if not better than that. And I'm going to miss this. So I will take my place next to Norm, and I will continue to come to these meetings, because it's important. And I want to thank everybody that's here tonight, and it's been wonderful. So thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Maza, thank you.
I did make, I did make notes on what I was going to say, and I forgot the most important thing. This is this week's staff report, okay? Ninety percent of it was written by Rebecca. Twenty-three consent items, plus endless other stuff. And this is during the holidays, and during fires, and whatever else. And so Dennis is correct, we could not have had this meeting tonight without her, and we usually can't. So I really want to give a big plus to Rebecca, and thank her very much for allowing us to be able to read a thousand pages or two thousand pages semi-efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. Kellen?
Yes, I'll be quick. So my heart goes out to everyone that's been affected by this. I don't live in Malibu, I live in West Hollywood, but I've come to know most of you fondly, some not so much. But, I'm kidding. I want to say some of the things that City Attorney's been doing. For price gouging, we're working closely with the LA District Attorney's Office and the AGs. So if you do see anything, feel free to report them to the City Attorney's Office. If you don't know how to get ahold of us, send it to staff, they'll send it our way. Something we're being very big on monitoring. Commissioner Maza said be careful about people trying to buy your land. There still is an executive order emergency proclamation from the governor for three months from the start of the fires, that if you, if someone solicits you for a price below market rate, that's a violation of that order, so that's another thing you can report to the City Attorney's Office, the DA's office, or the Attorney General's office. I just want to know, staff, as everyone has said, has been working extremely hard. At the City Attorney's Office will be here to help you guys as you rebuild. So that's it.
Maureen? Very sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Peak.
Obviously, because, you know, I spoke earlier at the city council meeting, there was a lot of concern with residents about the ocean and the debris removal and that stuff. And I think it's really important for people to, again, listen to the professionals. The ocean conditions in Malibu change, and they are trying to get that stuff removed as fast as possible. You are going to see a different ocean in three days from now than you see today, and those waves are going to be smashing up against all of that stuff. The quicker that people can get signed up with either their own contractor or somebody else to remove the material, preferably a government agency, it's likely probably going to be more cost-effective, from my experience during the Woolsey fire. And it's going to help us have a better environment for after this, for the ocean. The city's jurisdiction does not go into the ocean, although a lot of people actually pay property taxes on property that's now still in the ocean. And I also wanted to add that the rain is going to potentially come with that, too. So I would encourage people like myself that like to get out in the ocean to be mindful of that. I think that's very, very important. And let's not lose sight of the fact that when I visited our city's EOC at Pepperdine, this staff was working around the clock to try to do everything that they could. A lot of our staff is not as experienced as working within the FEMA disaster system, and it was like the hard knocks of learning. And some of our residents got really frustrated with them. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate how hard you all worked around the clock to try to keep our community as safe as possible. And I saw them there, I myself, you know, it was extremely tiring, but we're going to get out of this together, and it's going to be time. So I apologize for that, but I just had to make that comment. And also, just following up on what our city attorney said, please report that stuff, because otherwise, nothing ever happens with it. And that was one of the most frustrating things during past situations like this in our city. Like, you hear your neighbor talk to you about that, but then they don't do anything about it, or they let it go, or they don't want to put the time into it. But we need to be very smart about that, and please be safe driving on the roads later this week. Thank you.
One more comment. I've been watching a lot of the meetings, and everyone's trying to figure out in the debris removal, whether they can opt in and still save part of their foundation, and how to address all that. I'm saying this as an individual. The way I dealt with it was, if the foundation is fairly new, you should maybe get core samples and check and see what you got, and that might be your starting point in regards to how to deal with that. If you had an older foundation, I'm not, you can probably shore it up, I just don't know how viable that is.
Yeah, I think, like, this is me speaking, wearing my, you know, ten years as retired LA County lifeguard, then fire brigade member. We must trust the science behind fire. And when it gets hot, and we have stuff in our houses that gets super, super hot, like, I remember a home during Woolsey for an amazing client that was near finished with their rough construction, and the house got what I would refer to as being vaporized. That fire burned so hot that it liquefied the metal in the foundation. They were able to do some repairs for that, but that's a one-off on something that was brand-new. You have to make a decision as to whether you want a new house on an old foundation that went through a catastrophic fire, or you want something new. And I hope that, and they are, that the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers works with the Department of Fisheries. You know, if we have to have a larger marine-protected area for a certain amount of time down here to try to let that stuff recover, and so that, you know, right now, the lobster fishermen, they only fish to a certain point, which is basically by the Malibu Pier. And they go west, and there's different areas that they can go, but they can't go south of that, because that's the way that the rules are. It was disheartening to me, I don't know that all of this has been in place yet, but when you saw the debris field that came out over the ocean and went out a few miles, I think it was the next morning after that fire, just after the tide came in, when I was looking at it down from the mountains, that extended far out into the ocean. There's been a lot of debris washing up on Zuma Beach, and that's going to continue. It's just going to get worse later in the week, and it's getting worse to the south, too. Thank God the ocean pattern this time of year, the longshore current moves from the Zuma area down towards the Santa Monica Bay. We're blessed that the disaster didn't happen and then have a south swell. I mean, for those of you that live west, so maybe I'm, you know, I'm not authorized to speak about that, I'm speaking as an individual right now. Like, it's frustrating when you see the squid boat out when you're driving down to this meeting, and you know that they're harvesting squid, whether it's used for dog food or it's served on someone's plate, like, they're going to get ahead of that, and they're going to figure that out, whether that's miles out into the ocean or not. So I just, it's a much larger event than I think a lot of the other fires sometimes that were kind of like more insular in Malibu. This fire had winds over a hundred miles an hour. I was in one area, and I got knocked to the ground, just by the wind, way before the fire got there. I'm a pretty big guy. So don't, what we don't want to see in the future is a situation where people continue to stay at their houses, because what happened with that is that people got in the way, and they got in the way of some resources. And that's really hard. I lost a friend in the fire. Super shitty, just because he stayed back at his house, and he's an alcoholic. Super sad. Anyways, all love from Malibu and our neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, consent calendar. Three A one here, we've got administrative coastal development permit number twenty-two-dash-
Sir?
Oh, sorry.
If I may, one quick housekeeping item is that the resolutions for this evening will all be modified by staff to reflect the name of the chair who was appointed this When we consider approval of the consent calendar, we have already had Commissioner State that he would like to pull items three A one, three A seven, and three A twenty-one for further discussion. Are there any other items that any other commissioner would wish to pull?
Yes. Quick comments on eight, nine, ten, sixteen, nineteen, hopefully helpful comments.
What happened?
I'm sorry, could you say those a little more slowly?
They're going to be helpful. Eight, nine-
Why?
-ten, sixteen, nineteen.
I thought, this is, we just got through talking about fire stuff, and now you're going to throw obstacles at people on this, instead of just getting it done and getting it out of the way?
I think what I'm going to be hoping to do is pull obstacles out of their way, if you want to listen to me.
Can you combine them?
One thing, Dennis, is that these are on the agenda for discussion or non-discussion. If anybody wants to discuss something-
Commissioner Maza, I know that, I know that. I got it. Commissioner Peak?
I was going to respectfully ask Rebecca to ask, to say, or Commissioner Maza, the first items that he wanted to pull were three A one, and a couple other, I didn't get the exact number on that, three A seven-
And three A twenty-one.
Okay. I have recusals on like a handful of these, so I'm going to remove myself from just these fire rebuilds, and just add that for the ones that I'm not going to recuse, not recused on, I could go over that later with Rebecca. And I hope you guys do the right thing, just for this three A one situation.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions on three A one. On page C four-point-zero, it shows on the corner of wildlife and selfridges, some kind of, I don't know exactly what it is, some kind of facility that drains onto that, that corner. And if anybody's familiar with the area, which I live more than five hundred feet, but I'm very familiar, that drains, that road drains directly into a blue line stream. So I'm just wondering what that is, and how the blue line stream is protected.
Chair, real quick-
So the contract planner for the item is available virtually this evening. If, we could open her mic for her to respond to that question?
Okay.
Gina Paulini here. So I'm looking for the page. I'm not familiar with that blue stream. I didn't see it noted on the plans. The applicant is also online, and they may be able to answer that question, but it did not, it's not something I noted in the report.
John, that blue line stream is completely across the street, in fact.
No, but the road runs down and into the stream.
I know, but you're talking a couple hundred, maybe-
Chair, real quick. Can we, can we state what the address is and for the record? And then the page number again, for those that don't have it.
It's two-eight-eight-one-nine Selfridge Drive, it's item three A one.
Thank you. And the page number you're looking at?
And I'm looking at, in this, in this particular case, I'm looking at C dash four-point-zero. It would be the lower left-hand corner. There's a series of boxes, look like boxes, and a drain that goes right to the street. And-
It's off the septic.
And, and there would be a problem if that's a septic system, but it doesn't identify as a septic system, as far as I can tell.
It's a drain box, you got to put it on all-new construction.
Well, I'm asking the planner.
I believe it is for drainage, yeah.
Drainage? And is there any filtering or anything to, because the city's environmental agency has been there before on drainage, draining swimming pools and selfridges.
The Public Works Department requires BMPs to make sure that the water is clean to wherever it's draining to.
Okay. My second question is, that would be, the landscape plan, which would be L, L one, is the simplest one to look at. And there's, there's seven large, large palm trees on the property that are going to remain, and these are biggies, probably fifty years old. And I'm wondering, is this something that, since that's a main fire corridor in that area, it burned eleven houses within a couple blocks, are those necessarily allowed on a landscape plan? And are they necessary? And I would ask you, and I also like to ask the owner if they're necessary, since they are a major fire hazard. And also, on that same question, the house itself is surrounded by a hedge that's much higher than six feet. I'm wondering if that is in the conditions of approval, to leave that there.
So with the palm trees, they were allowed to retain the existing ones, they were not allowed to add new ones? Because they are so significant, they didn't intend to disturb those ones? It's a question due to the fire, it's a question that you can ask the applicant, they are here tonight, online, to see if they are, if they have a change in opinion on those trees.
Okay. Otherwise, they would be allowed, is what you're saying?
Correct, they are allowed.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask the applicant, since the house, two doors, south of him, and two doors east of him, and three, four houses to help selfridges burn down from the last fire, due to things like palm trees. So I'm wondering if, do you, the question is, would you remove them, or do you want to keep them? Very simple question.
And if the applicant is present in the virtual meeting, could you please? Oh, okay, thank you.
Welcome, would you state your name, please?
Widmer Peak Surveys and Traverse. Thank you all for your diligent work on what's going on with our town here. Thank you for that deeply, and in the interest of time, I'll make this as quick as possible so we can move on to your, your big book. We're prepared to address your concerns, Commissioner Maza, and whatever is needed to be done. This is a very simple project, I've been working on the block, and we feel that we've done a very diligent job of making sure that we address the drainage and filtration concerns. As you know, that, that is something that we always have to address as part of that. Being across the street, if you look at the drainage, it flows the other direction, it's not flowing right into the, your concerns with the stream, and it has to go through due process to make sure that it is handled. Your other concern was the A one, those are vested trees. And if that or the hedge that you're concerned with needs to be removed, we would be more than willing. We would just like to move this on, so we can get on to our bigger concerns here in the community. This is straightforward, and hopefully, yes.
I had a question for this, I'm sorry, when you're done, I'm sorry. I had a question of other commissioners, once you're done.
Okay. I was going to say, John, if- I was gonna say, John, if, uh, they are willing to make those concessions, are you willing to vote for this?
Oh, absolutely. I just, I just, these are so close to the house and so big that, you know, I think you should consider it.
I would like to note that this is an AC/DP. So this is a receive and file item?
Okay.
Well, if the applicant voluntarily removes something from a receive and file, it can be removed as I understand.
This is true. I just wanna caution against like a full-blown.
We're not voting. Okay, okay.
Yeah. So your decision, I'm not gonna, you know, force you to change the law. It's just, these are really close to your house and they are really big.
We understand your concern and appreciate it, and especially right now. We just feel that there's a lot of other things on your plate and this is a pretty straightforward project. We've been working very hard to make sure we comply to all the drainage elements and all of the landscape elements to satisfaction of the city.
Okay, so you, you are going to keep them?
No, you said.
Oh, you're taking them, okay.
If that's a concern, it's probably gonna be a concern of our, our client. And I don't want to, um, extend the approval process for another review when there's a lot of other people that need your time and.
No, I understand that. And, and we're not, I'm not proposing to put this into a full CDP at all. I'm just, you can withdraw parts of your application at this point.
We worked so hard on this. Can we just push, would we just get this done?
It will be approved tonight, okay?
Thank you, sir.
And the only question is if you would talk to the planner and decide whether you wanna take those trees out. It'd be helpful to the planner to know that reasonably soon.
And I also think it'd be very important for the community as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Deeply considered. Thank you.
I move, I move consent to item 3A1.
Yeah. Okay.
And I'm wondering if we might want to do a cleanup of the items that were not pulled? So that would be, uh, possibility to receive and file 3A1 and then if there is a motion and a second to adopt the remaining resolutions, 2510, 2513 through 2516, 2521 to 2525, 2527, 2528, and 2530 for the items which were not pulled. Um, if, unless somebody feels like they would not have a, the same vote for all of those items, I had spoken with our attorney prior to the meeting and we could do that as one full motion, second, and roll call.
All right. Make that motion?
I will second it. Let me ask you a question. Do we have to take a formal vote on the minutes?
We don't need to take a formal vote on the minutes. I did not include the minutes in that, but the minutes could just be adopted by consensus. So let's throw those in at the end as well, just your approving that on consensus. Uh, the roll call vote will be for the resolutions. Um, the first item that we discussed was a receive and file. So, uh, Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have trouble with the sequence here. Um, I could, because Craig is not in alpha order anymore. Okay, so Commissioner Peak?
He's, he had to recuse himself.
Oh, that's true. Uh, okay.
Yes. And yes.
Thank you, Craig.
And yes.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, so, um, those resolutions carry. So if you're on the consent calendar and you did not hear your item number pulled, those item numbers which were pulled were, that are, still remain are 3A7, 3A21, 3A8, 9, 10, 3A16, and 3A19. Anyone else? Congratulations, your, um, request has been approved and you are free to leave the meeting.
Okay. Um, can we bring Skylar back or do we still have a few other items?
I think, I think Selfridge was his only.
He said it a couple.
But we'll have to find out.
Gil, can you find Skylar?
Can we take him a list of the numbers that are still coming up and ask him?
So we're, we're gonna go to 3A7 next, correct?
So, um, administrative assistant Duncan is going to locate Commissioner Peak and ask if he has a conflict for one of the upcoming discussions or if he's able to rejoin the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. For Mr. Peak.
On TV, they've taken us to a fire insurance commercial. Jake from Safarm?
Yeah.
So Commissioner Peak is, out of the remaining items, we've discussed 3A1. Out of 3A7, 3A8, 9, 10, 16, 19, or 21, do you have another conflict?
Can't vote on 7, can't vote on 11, can't vote on 13, can't vote on 14, can't vote on 17, can't vote on 18, can't vote on 20, can't vote on 21.
Okay, so then, um, we did take a vote on the balance, so the only two items that you need to recuse from will be the next one and 3A21 if the commissioners would like to reorder that to clear those together and then invite, uh, Commissioner Peak back in?
Sure. I'm sorry.
Yes, of course.
Five more minutes, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll do 7 and 21, Commissioner Peak, and then we'll.
Okay, so we're now on 3A7?
3A7, so an extension.
Extension of submission applying verification of Woolsey Fire and application to extend the deadline of the submission of planning verification for non-conforming structures destroying the Woolsey Fire and obtained building permits continued from January 16th. It is 6760 Doom Drive Road. And my question here is one of process. Number one, this is extended fully 13 years from the fire. And, uh, the ordinance that extended it is under 1760.020C, which is any, and any structure described in section A, which is something that was legally built. Uh, to summarize, it says, a structure must be constructed legally. Uh, well, that's, that's not the case, but here, here's, here's the problem I see. The city council voted to extend, and I'm quoting the, the ordinance, a request to extend time to, and I, I wanna note that to, the six-year and eight-year periods may be granted by the planning commission where it finds, based on the evidence that due to unusual circumstances, strict compliance of the six and eight-year limit creates an undue hardship. Extensions may not be more than nine years. Okay? That's 2027. Uh, nine, 18, nine, 2027, yeah. So this is extended until 2031. And I do not believe that the city council, and they discussed it at the meeting when they did it, that, um, that nine-year period was total of all extensions, not adding extensions upon extensions. So I believe by approving this to 2031, we're exceeding what the council voted for and And then it says for due cause. And in this case, the due cause is they're waiting for interest rates to go down, essentially. Okay, well, is that a due cause? Uh, it's not in any of our due cause notices. Rebecca?
If you'd like, I do have a brief staff report that I could provide with the, of the background and how the planning department has been interpreting that ordinance.
Okay, I just, hopefully, ordinances are not, are very clear in the, the language of the law. So, uh, it's not, it has to be a legal interpretation.
Okay. Kellen, you wanna help us on this, please?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna, um, throw that softball back to Rebecca. I'm sorry. You, you have a staff report which explains, um, the timeline and the process here clearly. Um, I've had conversations with staff about the interpretation of this. I've read the ordinance and so how staff has been interpreting it, um, is a reasonable interpretation. And you're correct, it's a legal question, but we live in a world where no laws are black and white, so, um, it does take staff to interpret these. This is how it's been interpreted since this ordinance was put in place. Um, and it is a very reasonable interpretation. I think, um, it is correct from how staff is saying it and I don't have any legal issues with that. So I think the, the staff report is, is correct and will explain it from staff's point of view.
Okay, I'm gonna go through this as quickly as I can, if you could do next slide. Um, so in 2020, ordinance 476 was passed by city council that extended the deadlines to initiate the application process, the planning verification, as well as an extension to the obtaining building permits. At that time, it was extending the PV to 2021 and the building permits to 2023. That was based on the fact that at that time, there were a high number of Woolsey Fire, um, property owners who had not yet been able to file either the planning verifications or had filed planning verifications and had not yet obtained their building permits. Next slide. Sorry. Um, on September 11th, 2023, the current ordinance was passed. It extended deadlines to initiate the PV process by three years and it extended the deadline to obtain building permits by three years. Those new expiration dates were then November 8th, 2024 for the planning verifications, November 8th, 2026 for obtaining building permits. This coincided with AB 1500, which was a revenue and taxation code, section 70.5, which allowed property owners an additional three years to reconstruct improvements damaged or destroyed in the 2018 Woolsey Fire. Next slide. This is drawn from the city council agenda report and it highlights that although initially they're talking about the extensions to the dates of damage, um, they then talk about planning commission extensions totaling not more than nine years. When it was verbally expressed, um, the planning director at that time was reading it in as a combined total of extensions not to exceed nine years. That is what has been being communicated to Woolsey Fire victims since the adoption of this 2023 ordinance. I don't disagree with, uh, Commissioner Maza that this could have been an improved wording and, um, I know that principal planner Eaton is looking at an improvement to the type of language used when he brings the next ETA forward for potential consideration. On January 8th of 2024, city council adopted ordinance 513, that just lasts the same extension. Sorry, that's a duplicate, but I think was my original only slide on this background. Um, that has been the commissioners in the planning departments' communication and messaging to Woolsey Fire victims since the date of the adoption of the ordinance. A change in direction now, um, would have left the public misinformed for the past two If we wanna move on to the specifics of item 3A7, um, that will be slide 10. The extraordinary hardships include underinsurance in an amount of almost $2 million, $1.9 million of underinsurance. It notes that the family that owns the property is currently covering two college tuitions and also supporting a single mother and her daughter and a son with disabilities. Those two college tuitions will, in the next couple of years, hopefully those children will have graduated and that expense will not be part of their expenses. They have additional economic hardship due to the high interest rates for construction loans and mortgages. And they were not eligible for the fee waiver program because they had rented their property out two months prior to the fire, uh, in order to help make ends meet for the family. So i- it's not just interest rates that is, that are obstructing them. It's a combinat, it's a financial hardship. Economic hardship has traditionally been considered.
So, I'm from the Jeff Jennings School of Extensions. Give it to them. What, why, this, this personally affects nobody up here. This is for them. If we give it to them, it doesn't do a thing to us. So I'm for, let's just move on. We're, we're screwing around here with a couple of things and we don't need to be doing it. This is one of them. And I understand, hang on, Commissioner Maza, I understand what you're saying to the nine-year thing. These folks, I hate when this happens. Like when the lady was sitting in the audience and she was sick. Um, these guys have got some, some stuff going on. Let them work through this. What the heck? If they wanna stay and they've got kids and their kids are still here and they're gonna, kids are gonna go to our school, we need to let them stay here and we need to figure out a way to get them to stay here. That's where I am, so.
Okay. May I comment?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, the way the laws of our country work is the superior authority that passes the laws are the ones who decide what they write in the laws. And in this case, we have someone telling us that in two years from 2025, which is now, their kids are graduating from college and they will no longer have those expenses. What we have here is a very clear, very clear ordinance, 1760020, that says, shall not exceed nine years. Well, I'm, I, I, you can have the city council do that. The reason why extensions are put in and there are limits put on them is because years ago, we had unlimited extensions and we had a case of, in this case with Cher, where she had extended her house 17 years. Okay? And the planning department came to the city council and said, hey, this is crazy. Okay? We can't have these permits going back 17 years. Okay? Well, they, they have ever since put limits on, on how long you can give extensions. In this case, it's 13 years when they said nine. Okay? There are other, you know, fudge factors in a lot of these other things where they're, they're, they're probably over nine, but there's none that have come in 13. And, um, that's six years from now. Uh, 12, more than that, okay? So how long do you give somebody to say, well, gee, I, I underinsured, so I can't build my house back until I earn the money and I could, and they could come in? Are you saying that they could come in in 2031 and say, ah, I need another five years because the rates went up?
No. That would be the end of it.
Well, why would it be the end of it? Because we, you're, what you're voting on right now is, well, we don't care what it says in the law, uh, give them a break. Okay? Well, that's not the way, reason laws are passed. And, and there's an appeal period to the city council. There's, there's all kinds of things that can be done, but it's not the, the purview of the planning commission to make law. And I don't care what our city attorney says, that is true.
Hang on. Okay, Commissioner Leonard?
Um, I have a couple of questions for staff. So on this project, this is a planning verification that they've already submitted for?
No, they are asking for a four-year extension of the deadline to submit a planning verification and for a five-year extension to obtain building permits for a total of nine years of extensions. They would be asking right now for the maximum possible number of extensions.
Okay. Then also, there is precedent that the planning staff's interpretation of the ruling, even though it is not clear, uh, this is a continuation of precedent in regards to their interpretation?
In re, in regards to what has been being expressed to the public since the adoption of this and all the slides that showed. and all the slides that showed what the staging looked like in terms of this is the deadline to submit, if you're granted an extension, it could go to this far out, all of your extensions may not exceed nine years. That's what's been being communicated to the Woolsey Fire victims since the adoption of this ordinance.
Yeah. And staff, and councils, actually, we are gonna be addressing this as part of the Paradise Palisades Fire.
That will be a separate issue because Principal Planner Eaton will be bringing, based on city council's initiation, on the 20th, he will be bringing to you for your consideration and recommendations draft language for a zoning text amendment and an LCPA amendment, which would not apply retroactively. Those will only apply to future fires.
Yeah.
So those time limits may be completely different, or they could be the same, depending on what city council ultimately decides based on your recommendations on that date.
Okay. So based upon all those answers, I think that we should go ahead and receive and file. We're basically following precedent and.
And you would be in this case making a motion to adopt the planning commission resolution and a second for adoption?
I'd like to make that motion.
Can I ask a question?
Wait, Commissioner Hill had the next shot. Go ahead.
I'm usually really good at math, and I don't understand the math on this. I think you guys are both right. We should be giving them, giving them a chance, giving them a bite. If John is saying it's 11 years when it should be nine, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying it's 13 years.
13.
It should be nine.
Okay, well, so my question would be, is there any appetite, they're asking for four and five years respectively to say three and four years and sort of, I hate to like, you know, cut the baby in half, but is that?
I don't even think we have that option, do we?
You do have that option because this is a resolution that could be amended. The owner is saying that they will need four years to get from where they are today to being able to submit a planning verification, and based on that, they were estimating if they might need an additional five years to meet the building permit deadlines.
I'd like to, you know, I just want to say one comment. We are in another disaster right now. I really think that it's prudent for us to set an example. Instead of continuing, going down this road of the six years after where we're splitting hairs on every single fire rebuild, we need to be a supportive planning commission. And Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, just what I said, I think, you know, I still don't get the math. I think we might not be accurate, but I do agree, we need to be, if there's any doubt at all, we need to just be letting them do it.
Can I?
Okay, one more, that's it.
That's it? Okay. We now have 700 houses that burned down. The city council will pass another ordinance like this that gives an extension and a deadline. Are we saying right now, this very instant, that whatever they pass, we can ignore?
No.
Because that's essentially what we are doing here.
No.
No, but we might be saying, whatever they pass, it better be 13 years.
Yeah. I think they're planning, we're hoping that they're planning on clarifying this. We're going on precedent now, and.
And can you tell me what the precedent is?
She, Rebecca?
She said for the last two years.
This is, you have to understand, John, this is the guidance that she's been, the planning staff has been giving to fire victims. And we're, what you're talking about is changing the goalposts on them. This is a terrible idea considering that we're in the, going into a brand-new disaster.
That's not what Rebecca said. She said in the last two years, we have been, not the first six.
Okay, so Rebecca, we're at a point, we take a vote on this, am I correct?
Yes, right now, we have a motion from Commissioner Leonard for adopting the planning commission resolution. It does not yet have a second.
I'll second that.
Craig, do you have any more comments?
No.
All right, let's take a vote. Let's keep this thing moving here.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Hill, I'm gonna get it at some point during the meeting. Commissioner Mazza?
I believe we have to follow what the city council says and what the law says, so no.
It was a yes or no?
That was no, the last one was no.
Motion carries.
Okay, I pulled 3B8. I mean, 3A8.
No, no, we have to do, we have to do 3A21 first.
3A21 first. Oh, right.
And that's gonna be very quick.
Okay, Commissioner Mazza, please.
Okay, 3A21. Or it's 3B21, I'm sorry.
It is 3A21. In the original staff report, it was a 3B.
Let me just. Just give me one second, there's so many of these. Oh, I'm sorry, I got this totally wrong. This is, this is what I was thinking about on.
This is the same thing.
Same thing, except in this case, it is based on the fact that interest is increased from 5.88 to 7.375. Oh, it's now seven, it's 6.695. But number one, 13 years. Number two, I do not think a valid excuse for an extension is I want a certain mortgage rate. And especially when chances of that happening are near zero. Okay? So in the future, are we going to approve extending, extending permits because we want to ignore what the city council says and we use as an excuse, somebody wants a cheaper mortgage?
Well, I, I think they have a lot more things than just a cheaper mortgage on this. So once again, I think we need to just do this, and given the light of where our community is, I, I'm not gonna be the one that says no to something like this, I'll hunt you down. So.
Well, you know, I do have, we have, we're talking about over 1,100 houses here that have burned down in the last eight years.
And it's, we all know that this isn't gonna happen overnight, and they keep saying, oh, we're gonna go easy, it's gonna be easy. It's never easy here, ever.
It's never easy here, so.
So let them have it. Let them have it, let's go. Rebecca.
Thank God it's your last meeting, but the situation is, how do you run a planning department when you have no rules?
They're going by the interpretation.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
So if I may, in prior situations where we've offered time extensions, Vice Chair Hill has requested statistical data to back up the rationales that people have cited. That's why I've included statistics specific to the cost of construction when people say that the construction costs have gone up. So it's not just somebody saying it, you have statistical from respected sources, evidence agreeing that those expenses have increased. They have also cited the loss of their family home, their belongings, their car, a very long series of severe illnesses and deaths within their family that have resulted in probate, as well as processing grief.
It's all there.
They were underinsured, they've just now settled their lawsuit with SCE to even know how much money they have to go towards the rebuild. So that's why they haven't been able to start drawing plans. They didn't know what funds they were going to have available to them.
And there's a lot of people like that. Commissioner Hill, go ahead.
John, this looks like a litany of due cause, all kinds of illness, et cetera, like Rebecca just said, I, that's, I mean.
Do you want to make a motion?
I can understand that, but to base partly, and this is just for future use, to say costs of construction are going to go down, uh-uh. Everybody knows that.
We'll get, we'll give you that. That's not, that's not it. It's everything else but that. And the interest rates and the cost of construction, that isn't it. These folks have had some trouble, and they need help. Let's take a roll call. Let's get this done. Go ahead.
Do you need a motion first? I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
I believe that the planning process should be clear, so I'm gonna vote no.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm gonna hope and expect, per my comments in the opening, that we'll get very clear direction this time through from the council, and we won't have this problem going forward. So are we on to the things that I wanted to pull?
Sure.
I believe that we need, we need just a moment to let staff, let Commissioner Peak know to resume the dais, and then we will begin with item number 3A8.
While he's coming back, well, I don't know if he needs to hear this or not, but I just wanted to say that all my copious notes on this burned in the fire, so I'm working from kind of, sort of a skeleton of what my notes were, and we had some correspondence with staff earlier, and I don't know that I ever got an answer. So some of my, my comments are two categories. One, can we help them more than they've asked for? And two, it's maybe a clerical thing that has maybe been answered yet, but I missed it in my notes. So these should go quickly.
Craig, I appreciate that, Craig. I do have one comment. I think that your diligence and your follow-through in regards to all these should be commended, but also the time that you're taking in these meetings, if we were all to have the same minutes, that we would never get through the consent calendar at these meetings, and that if you could just please take in consideration the rest of ours times, I personally.
I totally am.
Let me just finish. I personally mitigate what I say to help keep the meeting moving along. There are a lot of thoughts I'd like to express on all these things, but I try to just keep it to what we're here to do.
I'll talk, I'll speak less than that. Okay.
But I would comment that we are here to consider every item and make sure it complies with the codes.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Hill.
3B8, they're asking for three and two years respectively. Should they be asking for more now? Seems like, you know, we're here, they're asking for an extension, why not give them what they need? Yeah, Skylar?
I was gonna ask Rebecca what her question was.
I was actually going to just mention really quickly, the reason that the owner's ref is not able to attend tonight is because her elderly parents just lost their home in the Palisades Fire, and one of them has become quite ill, and she is at the doctors with them this evening, or she'd be here to speak regarding it herself. They are still waiting for a final settlement from Southern California Edison. They have had their mediation hearing extended, I think, three different times so far. I know that they were hoping to get a hearing in February. I don't know that they know how much money they have for the rebuilding effort yet. So to answer the commissioner's question, if you want to add time to what they've asked for, I think that would be a helpful thing to do, but that's completely at your discretion.
Well, they're asking three and two, should we just say four and three?
I think that's fair, good of you.
Skylar?
I just wanted to suggest that maybe we approve the remaining consent calendar items and that are related to Woolsey Fire rebuilds with the one condition, that if the city changes any laws in relation to how homes are supposed to be built in high wildfire areas, which is all of Malibu, that they try to do everything that they can to mitigate those measures and put those in place when they build.
That would be something to fold in on the 20th, I think, probably, right?
Could I ask the city attorney a question?
Go ahead.
We're getting reasons, in my opinion, okay, obviously, and people don't agree with my opinion too often, but we're getting kind of fast and loose on what people are requesting and what staff reports say, and then saying, well, let's make it a little better, and let's make it a little worse, or let's throw this in and throw that without any, any, really, testimony, I should say, or whatever it is, is that a proper way to deal with an application? Because this was an application for an extension, not, not something else.
Yes, these are discretionary, so just as sometimes we see that we cut them down to shorter time periods, so long as it complies with the code, then you can extend them as well. So it can go either way.
I mean, a few of these I just looked at, and I just, my reaction was, yeah, they're gonna be back here in two years or whatever, so why not just give it to them now?
So is there a way, I'm asking this question of our city attorney, for us to deal with all of these and say we're approving them, granting the extension right now? And if there's some new laws that are passed at the city level that are in regards to high wildfire areas, that they be implemented on the construction of these homes?
First of all, your building code covers them. So Chapter 7 of the building code requires you to rebuild for a high fire severity zone. So there are no ifs, ands, or buts, you have to do it. Now, could there be additional elements or items? Yes, those could come into issues like clearance around a property. Those have yet to be considered, but they're certainly good topics to bring forward. Typically, Los Angeles, Los Angeles County Fire Department is the entity that helps to keep our property safe, as does the state fire marshal. So they may have individual codes that they bring forward to help address this situation.
Chair, can I make a motion to approve item 3B8? Yes.
I second it.
Very good.
As is.
As is.
Okay.
Rebecca, real quick, I just want to know for the record, I think when we're seeing 3B8, that's because you're using old binders, and these are 3A, so.
If you're not looking at the first cover sheet, you're not seeing that its numbers changed to, they're all As, they're all 3As.
Yes, so for, that's okay. For the record, I just want everyone to know, if we watch this video on YouTube later, you're at home or in the audience, if they refer to anything with a B here, it's gonna be considered an A for official purposes.
So to clarify, Skylar, your motion is for approval as originally written versus the amendment suggested by Commissioner Hill?
I mean, I think that's what we got right now, and I think that based on what's happened, we probably need to kind of revisit this and come up with a better plan, but that could happen in a year from now. And if we had to have one item that these were all on, that would be fine.
And I believe I heard a second. Did I?
I seconded.
Okay.
That was just for this item?
Everything else has already been approved.
Well, Craig had a whole list.
Yeah, a couple more.
We have several more to go.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
But let me get, I'm getting a little confused here. All of these extensions are under 170600.20. They have nothing to do with the current fire, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is for item 3A8, Planning Commission Resolution 2518, and we will call the substitute motion first, which is for approval as requested. And the request was for three years extension of planning verification and a two-year extension to pulling building permits. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, 3B9 is the only other one of the couple more that I picked that has the same, same issue. This is the only other one, where they're asking for two and two. This is a compelling story. It seems like what they've got in front of them, they're gonna need more than two and two, but you guys have just kind of just said, let's just.
Okay, so I want to, maybe I didn't understand the last item, we might need to redo it, but I want to make sure that, I think it's understandable, based on what has happened in the last, in the month of January of this year, that this is a lot of a work, large workload for our staff. And if, Craig, you support granting a longer extension for this and other fire rebuilds at this time, I would make the suggestion that we apply that to all of them.
Well, this is the, this is the discussion we should have had on the previous one, and it's just like, how do you, my thought on this one is they're particularly, you know, they have, they have due cause here in spades. So two and two sounds short.
So what do you think? So what do you think it should be in terms of numbers?
I don't, I can't say that. As I said, a lot of the detail in my notes is vapor now, but that was my, my impulse was, so if other people are looking at it and saying, yes, great, if not, I defer to the body.
I am in agreement that we, to expand it, but I also want to be a contrarian in regards to it. Our goal is to try to get people to initiate the process, and by just throwing in additional years, we might be actually slowing down the process. I think we, so as, I will go either way.
Well, the only other thought too is what you just said, we suddenly have a bigger workload on the horizon, and maybe there will be more bottlenecks, and maybe that's another reason to give them, give them a little more.
Yeah.
I'm gonna also, I very much appreciate the comment by Drew here, Chair, and in light of thinking about that, I'm trying to think about the long-term situation here, and there's a chance that the codes change more than they are right now, even in terms of planning. So I think that we should stick to that current timeline that's on there, and if those people want that, and they can get their act together and get it done, if they have to come to us and tell us, God forbid another fire happen, and they need an extension, and those are the circumstances, that's gonna be up for the commission at that time to decide.
Exactly.
But I feel at this time right now, many of the people on here, and Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, this hearing was supposed to happen a long time ago.
Yeah.
This hearing was scheduled for December 16th.
I recall.
It was postponed because of the Franklin fire to January 7th. On January 6th, we received information about the severe weather warning and an abundance of caution, postponed. The next day, the Palisades fire erupted. We postponed to when we thought would be a reasonable timeframe to deal with anything that might happen, and we did not postpone far enough out, so it was moved again. So it's been adjourned, adjourned, adjourned.
So in light of that, and I remember us talking about that, I feel like you had asked me some availability for some dates, and originally I was supposed to be out of the country, and I decided to stay to help my community, which I think was 100% the right decision.
Me too.
I think it's very smart for us, and looking even in how this plays out over time, the individuals that are in this category that were continued on that item, they have had uncertainty in their lives since Christmas or Hanukkah of this year, or whatever other holiday they celebrated, the New Year for that matter, our, you know, United States calendar New Year. And I think that we need to give them certainty that that's extended to that apparent amount of time right now, and I would like to make that same motion to approve it as is for 3B9.
I'll second it.
And you're, for the record, that is for item 3A9, and the Planning Commission Resolution number will be 2519. And Commissioner Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hill?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we should...
Oh, we'll break?
No.
Oh.
I think we should be careful when we say fire victims, because there's two sets, and there's the Woolsey, and then there's this fire. And they're under different ordinances. It will be under different ordinances and different extension periods and all kinds of stuff.
I'm sure when the time comes, we'll break it out as Palisades or whatever.
No, I know, I'm just saying, you know, this is a, this is a meeting. When we say fire victims, there are 1,100 instead of 430.
Yeah, and some of them, some of us aren't victims, we're survivors.
Yeah, so we don't want to be, we want to be clear on what we're saying, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
In light of that, that commentary, I wanted to add one thing, or just as a question. I believe that all of these in here are from the Woolsey fire. We've not seen anything on here from the Franklin fire or other, correct, Rebecca?
Correct. That is correct, and I would also just remind the Commissioners that when council adopted that ordinance at that point, there were 96 who had not submitted yet. So we have taken it from 96 down to this last remaining 19. So it's working, and we're helping people restore some of what they had before.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
3B10?
3A10?
3A10. There was just, there was a question on this, there was some uncertainty whether the tank is considered eligible for a PV. Has that been resolved?
That has been resolved. It is eligible for a PV. The problem with that item was that they, when they initially submitted their planning verification, they didn't realize that the tank was needed to be included in the application. It was not, and therefore they needed to file a separate planning verification for the tanks. My understanding is that they have already submitted those plans to Akash Shaw, who can accept them if their deadline is extended.
Okay.
He can't approve it unless they have, there's an extension to their deadline.
Sounds like my, my question is resolved. I would, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Great. See, these aren't taking long.
I'm sorry, I looked down. Who said that they were seconding that?
Skylar.
Thank you, Skylar. Vice Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peake?
Gladly.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. So now we are on 3A16, and I do have a speaker slip from the applicant if there are questions that you'd like to ask.
I just, my question on this was, they're asking for three and three, but apparently the PV was already obtained, so they shouldn't be needing, they should need an extension only for the building permit, right?
Let me take a look at it, at the slide for this one for just a moment. There was, there have been more than one of them that submitted in stages, so some items have been approved, and others still need planning verification supplemental, and I'm not sure which of them this one is, to be honest.
Just for the record, sometime in December, I submitted some questions about a few of these. I think this was one, and I never got a reply, or if I did, I didn't read it before things burned, so...
To my recollection, you asked me that question about a different item, 3A17, and that one is a piecemeal rebuilding process, because they lost multiple dwellings, and both, it's like owned by a nature trust. That, those questions that you sent me were regarding 3A17, to my recollection. I don't recall it being related to this one, but I could be mistaken.
Okay. So...
All your answers, questions answered?
Well, she's, she's answered. I think the question is, are they asking for something they don't need?
Oh, I, I don't believe that they have an approved planning verification for this. I think it could be in one of the situations where somebody had submitted a planning verification, then realized they didn't have significant, substantial enough resources to follow that route, it needed to replan. But I honestly am not seeing that. I can try to see if I can open development database from here.
So you're not seeing any wrinkle in front of you?
I'm not.
Okay, then I'd make a motion to approve that.
So you're good, you don't need to...
I'll second.
Okay.
So Vice Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peake?
Thank you, Rebecca.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, finally for me, 3A19?
Yes.
I've probably asked this before too. The form asks, on their form, they ask for three years each, the letter they submitted requests only two years. How, what's the way, have we rectified that?
They, they came in person to discuss it further and to talk with our contract planner who was dealing with the Woolsey fire rebuilds, and based on their conversation, they filed the application for an increased period of time, because they didn't believe they had requested enough initially in their letter.
So that's a three and three?
It's a three and three.
Okay. I move to approve.
Second.
Great.
Vice Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
And Chair Smith?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna come back into session. That was the receiving file 23. Okay. All right. We're into, well, B, we had new items, we have none. So we're at 4A, am I correct in that? Okay, great. So continued public hearings for a coastal development permit number 23-039 and variance number 24-004. An application to allow for the installation of a new onsite wastewater treatment system, OWTS, including a variance for development within required environmentally sensitive habitat area buffer to allow for the replacement of the OTS. This is continued from January 26. We have a staff report and Fletcher's got that.
Chair, I have to recuse myself on this item.
We're getting real tired of this. Lucky you, though. Lucky you. Should we hear another, the other item for, and send you home?
What else? I'm happy if you want to do that, but a lot of people have been waiting, so I would...
I'd like to make a motion to do that.
We do have two additional items.
Yeah.
I'd like to move 4B and 4...
That's why you wanted to change that.
No, I want to change it because 4B is very short. And, you know, it's...
Oh, that's tremendo, too, isn't it? Okay. Wait, can you stay for 4B? Okay, let's go to 4B. So we'll make that switch. What about 4F?
4A is a fire rebuild, for the record.
Huh?
The property, 4A is a fire rebuild, property, this year.
Oh, okay.
Woolsey fire rebuild, property owners...
All right. Well, in that case, I understand what you're saying. All right. So he'll, he'll step out, Kevin. Thank you.
Commissioner Pete, may I ask you what area you are going to be in for me to look for you later? Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Staff report, we're back with staff. Go ahead.
Which one is this?
All right. Good evening, Chair Smith. How many times have I been gonna say that?
One last one.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. The item for you, as Chair Smith just said, it's a CDP for a new septic system serving approved fire rebuild over on the west side of town. That includes a single-family home and a detached guest house. They each had their own septic systems, and they're both destroyed in the Woolsey fire. This property does request a variance for development within ESHA as the proposed septic system is within 100 feet of the Blue Line stream. And, let's move on. So here's the vicinity map showing the subject property, beachfront, bluff top, right over there on the west side of town. And it is serviced by a shared easement that extends down from PCH to the north. For some reason on this map, PCH is labeled where the easement is, but you'll see that the Blue Line stream comes down from the north, empties out into the ocean, and kind of meanders around the northern and western corners of the property. So a quick description of the project, you're abandoning the 1,500 gallon tank that serviced the original single-family home, as well as the 750 gallon tank that served the guest house. And this will be installing a new 3,600 gallon septic tank to serve both fire rebuild structures. So you're basically consolidating two tanks into one. And like I said earlier, it does include a variance for encroachment into ESHA. And moving on. So the existing septic plan, this is the site plan and demolition plan. So this, this is, I don't know if you could see this, but it shows the property right in the middle, but also the Blue Line stream along the western edges and that meanders over into the northern side as well. This does show the footprints of the destroyed home. If you can see my cursor on the screen. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, this, this is helpful because it shows the footprints, which will be remaining for the rebuilt structures, of course. There's no real room for that to move around. So this shows the existing septic tank over here on the eastern side.
Can you show it on the mapping one more time, please?
Can you see my cursor?
Yeah, yes, right here.
Yeah. So then that's the existing tank for, destroyed tank for the main house. And then over here on the, this is the, where the guest house used to be, this was the old system over here. And that, you know, produced an issue with the concept of replacing like-for-like. This, this is actually way down there in the, in the wave-up rush zone, so we couldn't allow that. So as you can see here, there are several constraints on the site. I think I have that on the next slide here. You got the Blue Line stream to the north and to the west. And let me just show you the buffer from that. The 100-foot buffer is this dotted line where my cursor is, and then it kind of meanders down south like that. So everything, you know, on the northern and western edge of the property is within 100 feet of the line stream. You've got your coastal bluff to the south, you've got your steep slopes pretty much all around. And like I said earlier, you've got a wave-up rush zone towards the bottom. So there's a lot of constraints on the site. And as I pointed out here in green, which is where the applicant settled on for a, for the location of the new septic tank, you know, that's really the best available location. You couldn't get around the Blue Line stream setback, but it is as far away from the Blue Line stream as you can be. But it, it does avoid the other constraints. You know, most notably the, the bluff top setback, which, you know, would be basically to the south here. So that just shows where the best location is, and that's exactly where they're putting it. So you can see the new tank up here. You go some seepage pitch up here in the driveway as well. So this is the existing driveway. And, you know, that really is the best location. It's already a level pad. It's already, you know, that is the pad that's been disturbed already in the past, so that is the best location. All right, so moving on. This is why we have the variance. Unfortunately, there's no way around this. By the way, this application originally came in as a de minimis waiver, but considering the property is completely in appeal zone, we couldn't allow that. So this had to come in as a CDP and, you know, with a variance because of the Blue Line stream. So again, this is a section of the code that talks about the buffer. And as I mentioned below here, I calculated the encroachment at about 40 feet into the 100-foot buffer. So there's really no way around that. Here's a list of the public notice and the series of adjournments that Rebecca mentioned earlier. So it's been a long road. I want to, you know, thank the owner and the applicants for their patience on this one. And there was one public comment we received shortly before the holidays. This is related to the potential for construction materials and vehicles staging in the shared easement that kind of meanders down the little neighborhood there. And those neighbors are concerned about those vehicles impeding access along that easement. I explained to them that there are conditions already in the resolution. This was back in December. So those conditions are included, so that will preserve adequate access along that easement, and no other public comments were received. So in summary, we ask that you consider the project for approval, adopting the resolution 2511, or amend as needed to reflect the commission's decision. That concludes staff report.
Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Maza. Oh, disclosures.
None.
None.
None?
None.
Okay, go ahead, John. What?
Well, your first, I want to ask the staff question.
Okay.
The old tank, the 1,500 gallon tank location, why, that's farther away from the Blue Line stream. Why isn't that the preferred location?
Here, I'll bring it back up for you. It's, there's just not enough room. That, that was really sandwiched between the eastern footprint of the structure and the eastern property line. And if you look at the proposed plan, you know, see the size of that tank right here? It says, you can't fit that here. Or, or sorry, it was here. Let's go back to the, yeah. So this is the existing little tank here, 1,500 gallon. You can't fit that larger shape in this area. It maintains setbacks, so.
Commissioner Hill? Refresh my memory. What, why, we have a 100-foot buffer from the Blue Line stream. What is the 150-foot buffer on Blue Line streams? When does that come into play? Kellen, do you recall offhand, or? I feel like this is a situation where maybe, in some cases, we've done 150?
It doesn't ring a bell.
Wells, thank you. Okay.
We're gonna make him the principal planner.
A question?
Go ahead, Drew.
For Fletcher. Is this a planning verification rebuild, or?
Yeah, so there are two planning verifications associated with this Woolsey fire. So it's, there's, I think it's in this after report. One is for the main house, one is for the guest house.
Okay, and the proximity, the guest house is being moved, or is it being built in the same location?
My understanding is it's being rebuilt in the same location, but...
It's existing, not conforming? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're, but, but, you know, like I said, the, the septic tank serving that guest house was really low and in the wave-up rush zone, so we couldn't hold on.
So this system will be servicing both?
Yes, so it's a merger of two systems into one.
Okay. And this is a, what type of system is being installed?
It's an advanced OWS. The applicant can speak more about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything?
I'll have questions all night, but do we need to hear from applicant?
Mr. Poffenberger, do you want to give a presentation?
You, you have speakers in front of you, Chair.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Tough duty up here. Go ahead.
On role, planning commissioners, planning chair Smith, planning staff, thank you for being here tonight to support this Woolsey fire rebuild project. The project is a proposed new onsite wastewater system with an advanced onsite wastewater treatment system to replace the two previously existing conventional systems that were on the site. And it's part of a parallel planning verification Woolsey fire project, two planning verification one for each previous structure to support a disaster-level, like-kind rebuild, such as what you're anticipating seeing many more of. All possible alternatives were considered in the design process for the onsite wastewater system. And what's here tonight, being requested of your approval, is the most environmentally appropriate solution. I would like to clarify that the property is constrained by the Pacific Ocean and a stream, so for all practical purposes, the stream and ocean water quality boundaries become blurred at this parcel. And the proposed OWS meets coastal bluff setbacks and does not require shoreline protective device based upon the setbacks. It's, the proposed onsite wastewater system is sighted within the previous development footprint to the greatest extent feasible. The treatment tank is larger in, in volume, hence it couldn't be located where the previous tank was. And the geology has been demonstrated to be favorable with respect to protecting the stream and the ocean based upon the current design even with the reduced setback. So even though there is a variance included in the CDP, there is no more favorable approach to support this Woolsey fire rebuild. I urge you to fast-track this new onsite wastewater CDP approval by approving it unanimously tonight and help put this property owner back in his home. For that matter, the property owner is here tonight, and I would like to defer three quarters of my remaining time to him to give you his input. And I'd like to reserve the balance of my time to answer any other questions that you might have. And lastly, the project architect is also here tonight, in case you have any questions for him. Thank you very much.
Would you state your name, please?
Yeah, hi. I first want to say congratulations, Dennis. What, what an honor.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Herschel Alfred. I am part of the family. It's a family home. This is a Woolsey fire rebuild that you've heard from many families. It's been six years and three months. And I, I understand laws. I'm a CPA. I follow laws. My sister's an attorney. And I believe that there are exceptions. And also that this is your idea. It's your idea to get rid of an existing permitted septic. And the reason why the two plans are bifurcated, and you have two in front of you, is because you had told me in the beginning that I'm not allowed to rebuild the beach house to 110%. So we are here today for, I guess, where you directed me, to spend more money, build a more expensive system. I think the neighbors will be excited, you know? And in addition to this, it's, it's a matter that's not even on here, but I'm also building a new fire hydrant for the whole neighborhood. No, I can't spend $150,000 and hook it to the main line. I have to go 350 yards up and send $650,000. So I said yes to that, too. And here I am, six years and three months, and I just want to move on with my life. So I plead to you to please do as you've led me to, right, and vote yes on this matter. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any speakers? Oh, I have one. Noren Haney. Hello. Good in the game.
Good evening, planning commissioners. It's pretty easy for me to talk to this. If you don't approve the project, it's a regulatory taking, and you'll have to buy the property. It's as simple as that. There's no place to put this prop, this onsite wastewater treatment system, other than where it's being proposed. The soil is very permeable. It will go straight down and then leach towards the ocean, just like all of the wastewater treatment systems that are along the shoreline servicing the houses on the shoreline. There's nothing different about this project. The only issue here is whether it's going to be approved or not. I've always been surprised that the ocean is not considered an ESHA, but it's not. Even a sandy beach is not an ESHA. The effluent that comes out of this will have no bacteria whatsoever. It's 100% clear. It has a little nitrates, little phosphates, which is not going to disrupt anything. So I strongly support this. As the advisor, as the, the head of the wastewater treatment commission, I strongly support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have on Zoom, Ernie?
There are no virtual speakers with their hands raised.
Okay, we'll bring it back to us.
Did the applicant team wish to use any more time that they had reserved? Thank you.
Tyler, can you tell us why he had to put in a fire hydrant? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm getting tired. Why did he have to put in a fire hydrant? You know?
I do not know the answer to that question.
The architect, we'll let him come up. Just relevant to the application, or what's the, what's the nexus?
It's just mind-boggling, that's all.
Yeah. State your name, too, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ryan Levis, the architect for the project. Yeah, we've been battling with the fire department for a very long time on this, and now the water district. The fire department would not approve the project. They could not grant us the fire flow necessary. They demanded that we upgrade the water system in PCH and provide a fire hydrant at the nexus of the common driveway that feeds this neighborhood and PCH. As such, we've been tasked with extending a main line along PCH, some 300 yards, as the owner mentioned, to tie into the appropriate T-valves that were installed some number of years ago by another developer. For that luxury... For that luxury, we are being asked to contribute some $150,000. And it, it's just been a battle the whole way through. And that's the reason why we're being asked to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If the hearing is closed, I can make a motion to approve the project as recommended.
I have a few questions.
I'll second John's motion.
Up for discussion? Go ahead. Yeah, for, for counsel here, what, what would be our legal authority and discretion to ignore the 100-foot setback requirement? They're, they're proposing 60 feet from the blue line stream. Under what, what color do we say that's fine?
So I'm not going to go as far as the speakers on saying whether this was or was not a take, it could be. But there are concerns that if you constrain a property to the point that it's unusable to such a degree that they can't rebuild to where they are before, that could bring us into the territory of, of takings issues. And so it is a decision that's made by the commission based on the totality, the evidence presented, that this is the only feasible way forward here. And that's what we've gotten from staff and from the applicant side. So there's our code, there's the coastal commission requirements, but there's a broader constitutional protections which was spoken to tonight, which is the takings, and those are always with us that we have to be mindful of.
So if it's not practical or possible to apply the law, we can go around it? Is that kind of the gist of it?
I mean, we have to follow the constitution, and so that's, that's, the constitution is different than state law and, and whatnot, so that is, yeah.
Well, go ahead. I was just gonna say Rebecca's got her hand up. Go, go ahead, Rebecca.
I just wanted to mention that there is a variance for the the difference in the environmentally sensitive habitat area buffer. That's the legal authority in this case.
Right. Okay, so, okay, we're, we're here closer to the stream than we should be, and we're not way up in the hills somewhere. We are, we are right on the ocean in an area of biological significance. We heard testimony that this is going to be clear and have little effect. But I'm, I'm just wondering, have, and this is a question for Kevin, did you try any other approaches like a evapotransvertive system? Or was there not room for that, or any other thing that would keep us without having to think about the stream so much?
Correct. It's a hillside bluff, and so it, it's, it's, there are slope stability issues with superficial dispersal of effluent, and there's bluff top setbacks. So, so really, given, given the space available and the fact that the existing seepage pit system had been performing and was documented to perform in the immediate future, that this proved to be the best solution at the site. In fact, part of the new system includes reusing the existing seepage pits, so there's one new seepage pit in the existing seepage pit.
Okay, thank you. Question for you guys. Yeah, it's a Woolsey burnout, and so we bend over, bend rules, the law to do, to handle those things. One thing we don't really bend rules on is septic stuff. Like, you know, if you have, if you have an old legacy house with an old thing, and you, you need to want a permit for anything, you need to get a new A W T S and get it certified and so forth. So the fact that this is a burnout and it's kind of grandfathered, do we say that we, in effect, can do that with the O W T S, too, here?
Well, Craig, the, the whole point is that there, there there has to be a location that we can approve, and this is the only location. So you can't say, as our attorney said, you can't say, you can't build a house because we won't let you put in a
Right.
And there's an available variance that's, that provided by the L I P. So if we find that, do, do the findings for the variance, then we can approve it.
Okay, fair enough. Great.
Any other questions?
No.
Vote?
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak? Oh, sorry, he's recused. Vice Chair Hill?
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Enjoy the rest of your life. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Sorry for how long it took you guys.
Okay, on to you, 4B.
If you'll give me just a moment, I'm going to step out and let Commissioner
Oh, yes.
Come back in.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we're ready to resume.
Okay. Back to us here, 4B. Conditional use permit number 24-005, an application to amend conditional use permit number 96, woo, 96-014, and conditional use permit amendment numbers 15-001 and 19-004 to allow an upgrade of, in licensing privileges from the existing type 41 beer and wine to type 47 beer, wine, and distilled spirits for the Tremanto Bistro restaurant, continued from our January 16 meeting, which we never had. So we have disclosures.
I think that we should be doing everything in our power right now to support local businesses. That's my disclosure.
My disclosure is we should eat the best Italian food in town.
I like it.
I've frequented the restaurant through the years, and that's it.
Yeah, gone a couple times myself.
Done.
Oh, man. Okay. Staff report. Ah, Barbie, very good. Please.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Today I will be presenting the conditional use permit amendment C U P A 24-005 for Tremanto Restaurant, which is located at 22235 Pacific Coast Highway. Now, as you can see on the slide, the subject tenant space is located on a parcel that is developed with a two-story commercial buildings. Tremanto Bistro occupy 1,164 square feet of space on the first floor of the buildings that on the front of Pacific Coast Highway, the permitted service area of the restaurants consists of 642 square feet, which is included a 542 square feet of interior service area and 100 square feet of exterior patio services. Project description, the, to permit amendment of conditional use permit C U P, the original one 96-014 and C U P A and 15-001 and 19-004 to upgrade an existing California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control A B C license, type 41 to an A B C type 47. Now, let's get some background of the existing approvals. The original C U P 96-014, which is under resolution number 96-042, was approved the restaurant with the sale of alcohol and with a condition that no outdoor seating is allowed. After that, a C U P A came under number 15-001 to allow exterior dining, including the onsite sale of beer and wine. And after that, on 2019, C U P A number 19-004 came to allow expansion of the existing 400 square foot dining room and outdoor patio services area by another 242 square feet, for a total of 642 square feet and a minor patio remodeling, without increasing seating capacity. Now, what's the difference in between the existing license, which is the type 41? As it's described as a sale of beer and wine for consumption on or off, the permits were sold. The targeted one, which is the type 47, it allows sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption only on the licensed permits, which is on consumption. There is no change of the hour of operation, which keeps the same. It was originally approved to operate between 12:00 P M. to 10:00 P M. on Monday until Saturday, and 12:00 P M. until 9:00 P M. on Sundays. And this amendment does not propose any change to the hour of operation. Staff doesn't receive any comments. There is no comments have been received by the planning department. And the daily operation and service area, the daily operation of the restaurants will remain the same. The proposed amendments will not result in, in increase on the seating capacity, which is 30 seats right now. Recommendation, we are commended to adopt the planning commission resolution number 24-82, determine that the project is categorically exempt from the SEQA and approving a conditional use permit amendment C U P A number 24-005 to permit the amendment of a conditional use permit C U P 96-014 and C U Ps 15-001 and 19-004 to update the existing A B C license from type 41, which allows sale of beer and wine for onsite and offsite consumption of the restaurant, to an A B C type 47 license, which allow onsite sale and consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for a restaurant, which offsite sales of beer and wine only, for the Tremano Bistro restaurant located in the Community Commercial C C zoning district at 22235 P C H. Now, from our general plan, I want to just mention three land use policies that can help the approval of this project. Land use policy 3.1.1, the city shall ensure visitor serving and recreational uses are compatible with the natural resources and aesthetics value of the area, which is existing for this project. Land use policy 3.2.1, the city shall permit the development of commercial recreational and visitor servicing facilities at suitable locations, which provide convenient public access, adequate infrastructure, convenient parking, and when feasible, are located where existing low-cost recreational uses will be enhanced. And finally, the land use policy 4.4.1, the city shall encourage establishment and continued operation of small neighborhood and community-serving businesses. When it came also to the parking calculation, there is no increase. No, basically, the total required space, it's keep the same, it's 16 space, and the total provided space right now, it's 18, which make that we have two spaces over what is required. Thank you for your attention, and I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you. Okay.
Do we have a speaker slip from the applicant, or no?
Only to answer questions if you have them. Any questions?
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
What I'd like to say now, as opposed to what I wanted to say before, is that, you know, in light of everything that's happened and how tough businesses are going to be on the coast, we need to accommodate these guys, right?
I agree.
We, we just, like, it's, it's a new game there. What I wanted to say before, though, this doesn't meet a lot of things in terms of P C H safety and future. You know, is it compatible, is it compatible with the neighborhood? Distilled spirits on, I mean, we're basically turning a restaurant into kind of a de facto bar. And, you know, we need to be careful with this. Caltrans has said we're turning the highway into bike lanes, fun for the whole family, you know? So, and we've just spent a couple of years going, P C H, everything safe we can possibly do. But now, you know, I think we need to, we need to kind of keep people and businesses here, so whatever we can do.
That's good.
Right?
Rebecca?
We do have a hand raised in the Zoom meeting for a speaker for this item.
Well, let's get him on board here.
Oh, okay, I take back everything? No.
I don't know.
Yeah, are we open or closed?
We're open.
Admin?
Sorry, it's Howard Druckstein, calling in from the interview here. I just wanted to say, I guess you guys are going to do it anyway, that Wilfredo is a great asset to this community for decades now. He's a wonderful guy. He makes unbelievable food, and he knows a lot of us locals, and he treats us like we're family. So it looks like you're going to do it anyway, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard. Commissioner Peak?
Do we have a speaker slip from the applicant, or no?
Just answer questions.
Just answer questions.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
I would like to second it. Yeah, is the, is it closed? Can we make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hill?
Brave New World, yes.
Chair Smith?
Absolutely.
Motion carries. And then I believe our next item was item number 4F.
Oh, yeah, what was that? That was that was at the end, wasn't it? You have to go, okay, this one? Is that it?
Are you coming back?
Uh, Skylar, this is the last item of the night.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You actually don't have to come back. Okay.
So you're, you can be on this or you can't be on this? Right. Okay. Oh, you're coming back for your stuff? Okay. Well, I'll just read what it says here. Coastal development permit number 24-055 and demolition permit number 24-031. An application for the exterior remodel of an existing one-story, single-family residence, resulting in a height increase from nine feet to 17 feet, continued from the January 23 meeting we didn't have. Disclosures.
None.
None.
None for me. So there's none. Okay, we have a staff report. And a good one, too, I can tell.
Good afternoon or evening, Commissioners. Thank you Chair Leonard and Commissioners, or I'm sorry, Chair Smith. The next item previously described is for a new coastal development permit. This application is for the exterior remodel of an existing one-story, single-family residence, resulting in a height increase from nine to 17 feet. And as previously mentioned, the demolition of 183 lineal feet of the exterior walls. As usual, the goal for my remarks today is to provide context and to equip the commission for the decision-making process. Therefore, firstly, I'd like to illustrate why this project was brought forward to tonight's commission. At discussion is an application for an exterior remodel of an existing, single-family residence. The Commissioners will be aware that pursuant to section 13.4.1 of the city's LIP, properties that are located within the appeal zone are not exempt from coastal development permits if the proposed project results in an increase of 10% of either the roof height or the internal square footage of that structure. So though the project includes traits that would normally classify the project as an APR, the plan proposes a roof height increase from nine feet to 17 feet, thus creating the conditions for it to be non-exempt from the CDP. What this project does not do, however, is create conditions for a discretionary request or variance as pursuant to section 3.6 of the LIP. Properties have a property right to build up to 18 feet via flat roof. So before the Commissioners tonight is solely a remodel of an existing, single-family residence with no discretionary requests. Formally, as already mentioned a few times, the project is an exterior remodel of an existing, single-family residence with a height increase and a demolition permit for 44% of the entire structure. Quickly, the applicant submitted an application that was classified as an APR on May 1, 2024. Upon review of the project and continued dialogue with the applicant and the staff visit to the property, the project was then upgraded to a CDP in October of 2024, with the project deemed complete in December. Quickly, the subject property is a rectangular 48,000-square-foot lot in a residentially dissolved neighborhood and is zoned RR1. The site is located south of Fern Hill and Gray Fox Drive, while also having Malibu Elementary to the north, and the property was constructed in 1990. Within your sets, you guys have the site plan, the floor plan, and elevations. I have selected excerpts from the, from the plan set just for, for any dialogue that we'd like to have. And then, yeah, path forward in summary. Staff does request for the commission to adopt resolution number 2506, determining that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA and approve CDP 24055 for the exterior remodel of an existing, one-story, single-family residence, resulting in the height increase from nine to 17 feet, including the demo permit 24031 for the demolition of 183 lineal feet, equating to 44% of the entire structure. Staff is also happy to consider additional conditions of approval if requested by this body. Happy to take any questions.
Go ahead.
There's no public hearing?
Any speakers? Any Zoom? Zero. Okay.
Okay, I have a question for staff. This looks to me, why are we calling it a nine-foot-high existing house when it looks, it has a 20-foot ridge line already? What am I missing?
So the, the part of the structure that's increasing started at nine feet. So it's not, it's not an overall increase of height. The overall height is staying the same at 20 feet, but a portion of the roof is going from nine to 17 feet. It's the entry tower.
I'm not, I've never seen how that's relevant. If the, if the whole, the height of the whole house is a certain thing and we're changing some other small part of it to another height? I mean, unless it's a view blockage thing.
Not there.
It's not there, right?
I mean, it's, yeah, particular lot, the way it's set up, it's
I haven't seen this case where we would just be selectively measuring one portion of it.
But that's all they're going to remodel.
So if you look at the code, the code doesn't specify what part of the roof has to be considered when it's, when it's increasing in height. So staff, and I've brought a project to this body before that does specify a particular part of the roof that, that does increase in height. Unfortunately, you know, that does require projects like this to become a CDP. But unless the code is more, the code doesn't have a lot of nuance when it comes to, when it comes to this.
This just feels sort of de minimis to me. But anyway, no? Are you shaking your head? Are you agreeing?
I'm saying he is correct. Now, and by the way, that was a very succinct and clear presentation. Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'm going to move approval of this project as recommended.
Terrific. I'll second it.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And wish Dennis Bonvoy.
Well, we don't know for a fact. You might, Skylar was right. He might still be
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Randall Mead that passed away in the fire.
I would like to add in honor of everybody who is going to go through all the effort to rebuild and stay in Malibu.
Yes, everybody. Adjourned. Thank you.